..................
Welcome to the full council meeting of Colchester Borough Council. I'm councillor Tim Young, the Mayor of the Borough of Colchester and I will be chairing the meeting this evening. The meeting is being broadcast live over the internet on the council's YouTube channel and will also be available to watch afterwards. Should the alarm sound evacuate the room using the nearest emergency exit and assemble at the car park at the rear of the town hall. Before we start this historic occasion, I would like to invite the Reverend Sue Howlett and the Bishop of Colchester Roger Morris to open the meeting with prayers.
Thank you. Let us pray. We are a city that is associated with Saint Helena. May we be inspired by her example to live faithful and devoted lives, seeking truth and searching for meaning in all that we do.
We are the city of Royal Steward Udo Dapifer, who established Saint Mary Magdalene Hospital just beyond the city wall. We pray for our general hospital, for our hospice, for doctors, nurses and those who work in social care, as well as all who provide a place of refuge and shelter for the sick and suffering.
We are the city of sanctuary for refugees from the Dutch in the 16th century to Afghanistan and Ukraine today. May we always be generous in our welcome and warm in the hospitality we offer.
We are the city of John Bull, leader of the peasants revolt. May we never tire in our quest for justice, equality and freedom for all.
We are the city of Edward Paxman and Harry Ricardo. May we continue to be a place of innovation, invention and technical excellence.
We are the city in which Charles Henry Harrod was born. May all our traders, shopkeepers and merchants enjoy success and prosperity and may our local economy thrive.
We are the city of Jane Taylor and her sister Anne, who together wrote Twinkle, Twinkle Little Star. May we never lose our sense of wonder and may your blessing rest upon all poets, artists and musicians who reveal your beauty to others.
We are proud to be the city of Colchester. May your blessing rest on us now and always. Amen.
Thank you Bishop and Reverend Sue. Please be seated. We have apologies from councillors Barber, Barton, Bustin, Goss, Lily, Kirkby-Taylor, Lissimore, Luxford Vaughan, Nissen and Tate. Declarations of interest. Any councillors to declare any interest on the item on the agenda? I'd be very surprised if there is. Okay. We're now going to present the letters patent conferring city status on the Borough of Colchester. So I'll invite the Lord Lieutenant for Essex, Jennifer Tollhurst, to formally present the letters patent.
Mr Mayor, distinguished guests, councillors, honoured guests. On behalf of His Majesty the King, I am immensely proud to be here at this historic moment for Colchester. It is impressive and moving to be in the moot hall when it is so full of those who work for their community, councillors, staff and people who work in the town for the common good. And it is the work that you've done, combined with the special character and history of Colchester, that is being recognised today as the town becomes a city. I feel though, that there might be some looking down on this event, who may be saying, has this not been done before? Not in this council chamber, but perhaps in a Roman temple where Colchester Camilla Dunum was founded in the first century BC. Colchester was one of only three Roman Colonia in Britannia and was the first capital until Boudica and the Isini tribe successfully defeated the Roman Ninth Legion and destroyed Colchester in AD 60. Some have suggested that city status is merely being reinstated. But that was all long ago and in very different times. In this age, the time has now undeniably come for Colchester to be recognised as a modern, vibrant, multifaceted city. Her late Majesty the Queen, to mark her remarkable 70 years on the throne, during which time she gave unstinting service to our country with wisdom and good humour. This year, assigned Colchester the great honour of becoming a city. The Queen visited the Borough of Colchester on five occasions. The first in 1949, when she was still Princess Elizabeth. Then, as our Queen in 1958, 1989, 2004 and 2010. They were all wonderful occasions with the streets lined with people. In 1989, it is reported that the crowds were six people deep. In 2004, her late Majesty visited the university and then Wilkin and Sons in Tip tree, the only royal warrant holders in the borough. On those two occasions, 1989 and 2004, she delighted the people of Colchester with a walkabout in the town, before enjoying lunch here in the town hall. Reflecting the strong relationship Colchester has had with royalty over the years. Of course, we have the wonderful portrait by Richard Stone of Her Majesty, painted in honour of the 800th anniversary of the receipt of the First Charter. I understand it was the painting that Her Majesty felt best summed up her role. And there it is. Colchester's royal connections go back to 931, when Athelstan, the first King of England, held a Witten Royal Council at Colchester, including 13 Earls, three abbots, 15 bishops and the Archbishop of Canterbury. William the Conqueror ordered the building of Colchester Castle in 1075, under the direction of Udo Dapifer. Although, there is early mention of borough rights, the first recorded charter was granted by Richard I in 1189. It is believed that Kings Henry I and II spent time in Colchester, probably in the castle. And during King John's Baronial Wars, the castle was occupied by French troops, but the king's arrival in spring of 1216 secured their surrender. During the civil wars, Colchester was broadly parliamentary in sympathy. However, in 1648, a royalist army occupied the town and was in turn besieged for some 10 weeks before the royalist leaders surrendered. William III stayed more than once in the home of Sir Isaac Reeball whilst travelling to and from Holland. And during the First World War, Colchester was the largest training centre for new recruits and was visited several times by King George V. Prince Albert, later King George VI, was guest at Colchester Oyster Feast in 1922 and his brother, later Edward VIII, also attended this notable occasion in the early 1930s. There have been many members of the royal family who have visited over the years. Only last year, the Duke of Gloucester came to open the new almshouses in Military Road. He had a busy schedule visiting other venues in the town, including planting a tree in Castle Park. As we walked into Castle Park through the big metal gates behind the war memorial, we realised we were somewhat ahead of time and so I wondered whether we might just pop into the castle, which was not on the schedule. So making a sharp left hand turn, the party headed for the drawbridge. Somebody asked where we were going and the Duke answered, I'm not entirely sure, but Lord Lieutenant is leading us astray. The staff at the castle had two minutes warning of the arrival of this distinguished visitor, who incidentally is a trained architect, but they were thrilled that he'd visited and so was he. Colchester is full of special things, the history much of which is documented at the castle, in part points to it being a garrison town. The borough is very proud of their relationship with the military and the fact that it is the home of the 16th Air Assault Brigade Combat Team with their rapid reaction airborne capability. Colchester is one of the very few firing stations in Britain and to mark the passing of the late Queen, the Royal Horse Artillery fired a 96 gun salute on the day after the death and a 21 gun salute the next day to mark the proclamation of King Charles III. The ceremonies held in Colchester are always beautifully organised and a credit to both the military and the borough. But that is by no means the whole story. There is a long tradition of supporting the arts in Colchester, with First Sight recently receiving the Art Fund Museum of the Year Award, the wonderful Mercury Theatre, Colchester School of Art and Design at the Institute and many local artists and musicians. Colchester is rightly very proud of its centres of education, the internationally renowned Essex University, Colchester Institute and excellent schools. The borough works in partnership to grow the economy with these institutions. Essex University, working with the Borough Council, recently hosted a session at COP27, the climate talks, on the use of natural resources in coastal defence development. This is an illustration of your laudably strong commitments to sustainability. Your parks and gardens are also outstanding. I'll never forget walking up towards the bandstand in Castle Park after the Platinum Jubilee Gun Salutes over the Jubilee Weekend. The weather was fantastic and the park looked amazing. There were so many people enjoying being there, having picnics and listening to the music being played in the newly refurbished bandstand. The mayor, the brigade and garrison commanders, together with the GSM and my husband and I, stopped and talked to lots of people. In my case, it included a full sized rabbit from the Mercury Theatre. It was a very happy day. Finally, I want to mention the robust voluntary sector with the excellent Community 360 Centre, an inspirational hub for voluntary organisations. There are many charities that work with veterans, the Food Bank which is outstanding, Open Road, I could go on. It is for all these reasons that her late Majesty assigned Colchester the honour of city status, the last one that the Queen assigned before she died. Today, Colchester becomes a city and we celebrate and honour all the great qualities exemplified here and we have great confidence that it will go from strength to strength. Congratulations to Colchester, it is a wonderful day. In my case, it included a full-sized rabbit from the Mercury Theatre. It was a very happy day. Finally, I want to mention the robust voluntary sector with the excellent Community Three Hundred Centre, an inspirational hub for voluntary organisations. There are many charities that work with veterans, the food bank which is outstanding, Open Road, I could go on. It is for all these reasons that Her Late Majesty assigned Colchester the honour of city status, the last one that the Queen assigned before she died. Today, Colchester becomes a city and we celebrate and honour all the great qualities exemplified here and we have great confidence that it will go from strength to strength. Congratulations to Colchester, it is a wonderful day for you and I know there are many celebrations to come. And I would now like to present the letters patent to the worshipful, the mayor of the city of Colchester.
Thank you, Lord Lieutenant, for the great honour of bestowing the letters patent on behalf of His Majesty the King, which confers city status on our beloved Colchester. And thank you for those kind, generous and thoughtful words which are so befitting this historic occasion. Thank you to the councillors, honorary aldermen, distinguished guests, the Colchester Watch, the Colchester Pipes and Drums Band, all the organisations and diverse communities involved in that marvellous procession we just had down the High Street. Our town crier, and that title doesn't change by the way, the members of the public and all those involved in getting us to this point where we can declare Colchester as a city. I'm incredibly humbled and honoured to be the first ever mayor of the city of Colchester. I'm truly grateful to my colleagues for granting me this honour. We are all, I'm sure, also eternally thankful to Her Late Majesty, Queen Elizabeth the Second, for granting Colchester city status as part of her joyous Platinum Jubilee. Thank you, ma'am. Colchester is a city with a rich, glorious and sometimes controversial past, an unrivalled history. However, Colchester is also a city with a bright, thriving and exciting future. Today, we stand tall and ignore the doom mongers and naysayers. We come together, proud of Colchester, proud of what it has achieved and what it can and will achieve. It isn't flawless, it isn't perfect, we know that. But we also know it has assets and qualities that make it shine like a beacon in Essex, in the east of England and now as its newest city throughout the UK. Colchester is a military city, it's a city with a garrison. We fully embrace our positive partnership with the army and we are delighted that they are represented here today at this historic event. You're very welcome, Garrison Commander. We owe our armed forces a massive debt of gratitude every day for defending and protecting us and if we can repay a little bit of that today, then we are more than happy to do so because of what they mean to our city. Colchester is a city of learning. We have some of the best preschools, nurseries, primary and secondary schools in the area. We have the Sixth Form College, Colchester Institute and University Centre Colchester. And of course, we have the University of Essex with its worldwide reputation for excellence and you are welcome here too, Vice Chancellor. It's another partnership that we care for and nurture because of its mutual importance to our past, present and future. We are so glad that so many of our partners in the field of education are also here, thank you very much. Colchester is a city of arts and culture. We excel in these fields throughout our whole city area. We all know about the amazing work done by the Mercury Theatre, Colchester Arts Centre, First Sight, the Headgate Theatre and Signals. However, we also pay tribute to all those smaller arts and cultural organisations in our communities, small towns and villages that help make Colchester the cultural capital of Essex. Colchester is a city of sanctuary and diversity. We welcome people from wherever they come from, especially if they are seeking solace or refuge. Colchester has been that welcoming place for centuries and we are proud to have that reputation. We praise the work of Refugee Action Colchester, now renamed RAMA, Refugee Asylum Seeker and Migrant Action, for their magnificent and heroic work and thank them for being part of today's celebration. Colchester, as the Lord Lieutenant pointed out, is a historic city. And the Anglo-Saxons, to the Romans who have managed to be here today, who made Colchester their first capital of Britain, to the Normans who built our magnificent castle, to the Royalists and Parliamentarians, to the Victorians and Edwardians. We lord our industrial heritage and we look forward to Jumbo reopening as a tourist attraction and place of education and fascination. We got through the world wars and right up to date, Colchester has a unique place in history and today is another part of it. Colchester is a city of beauty with its historic centre, scenic villages, riverside idles, constable country and even a beach at Mersey. We have glorious places of worship, historic buildings, wooded areas and green spaces. It is a haven for tourists and visitors which can certainly be capitalised on even more with our newly granted status. Colchester is a city that cares. We pay tribute to all those who work in our NHS, in social care, in care homes, in our hospice, in the charity and voluntary sectors, in our food banks, in our homeless accommodation, in the police and the fire and rescue service and in our local authorities at all levels, meeting the challenges of the day without fuss or seeking limelight. You are the real Colchester heroes, unsung, but our city would collapse without you. Colchester is a city with enormous potential. We must grasp the opportunities that city status affords us economically, socially and environmentally. We must attract new businesses and investment here with high wages, high skills and good green credentials. We must make the most of our creativity, retain our talent locally and face the challenges of the twenty-first century with confidence and cooperation. Colchester is a city that the mayor S and I are so proud to be the first citizens of during this historic year. We will allow ourselves as a council, this evening, I'm looking at the leader of the council while I say this, to celebrate and be joyful with our friends, partners and residents, but tomorrow we will continue the hard work. But most importantly, on this occasion, we cry from the rooftop of this historic moot hall as I officially declare, Colchester is a city!
Thank you so much. I now invite councillor David King, leader of the council, to move motion A. And councillor King, you have up to five minutes.
How unreasonable would that be, Mr Mayor? We're going for fifteen. I want to start with a thank you to you both, representatives of the city and representatives of the King for such eloquence and from the heart, you caught us in the moment and you added to it. So from me as the leader of the council, on behalf of the councillors and the organisation, you know, a huge thank you because this is about the energy of the moment and how we make this something that we take away with us, genuinely in our heart and in our actions and in the words that we utter next. Because how we act, how we respond, how we carry forward our duty as representatives is what matters. But let me get to the words, the trial piece. I move that the name of Colchester Borough Council be changed to Colchester City Council with immediate effect. The monitoring officer be authorised to make the necessary consequential amendments to the council's constitution. These are dry words, but this is a glorious moment. And I'll just briefly say such a significant moment in such a great place and the long history of Colchester as described, as we change from a borough to a city, to be Britain's first and Roman city now to the last, to the late Queen's cities, plural, is a really proud moment. And as our ceremonial procession showed with the flags of many nations, we provide a warm welcome for those seeking a safe and supportive place to live, work or visit. We have the attributes and the challenges of a city, we have scale and impact, innovation and ambition. We have great arts and culture, great places to see, great places to live and visit. And we know that city status is a recognition and also a raising of national profile, perhaps indeed international profile, helpful to us, helpful to our residents, a recognition of what we have here from an extraordinary garrison, the elite for our nation, to a world-class university and far more beyond. Now, we are in difficult times and the mayor alluded to that by agreeing we could have, and I agree with him, a few hours of relief. But in those difficult times, we need to hold close to the fact, the reality, that it's our emotive strength, the unity of purpose in this chamber and beyond that will ensure that we make the best of these challenges, that we find our way together. And in there is an opportunity for me, before others speak, to acknowledge those who in the four previous bids and those like councillor Laws and others on the fifth, got us to the place that we have deserved to be for a long time and now can exercise in terms of opportunity and exploitation of chance and fate. In what we have ahead of us will be challenged. In what we have ahead of us will be, as I say, opportunities to promote ourselves, our heritage, our culture for the benefit of all. We showed today our dramatic best, didn't we, going down the High Street, looking up at this great place? From our parade with our flags flying, for our ceremony, this multicultural nature of our city, our optimism, our sense of place. We together, all of us in this room and beyond, have been a great advert for Colchester, for our people, place, our past, our present and our future. And it's the easiest of duties to commend on behalf of my party and all parties this motion, thank you.
Thank you councillor King, I'm going to ask the group leaders who are here to speak in a minute. But firstly, I know this person has put a lot of time and effort into all five, well, I think most of the five attempts, to make this a city and I know it'd be a proud moment for him. So I'm going to call forward the High Steward of Colchester, Sir Bob Russell.
Lord Lieutenant, Mr Mayor, councillors, aldermen, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Colchester, Britain's twinkle star city. We gathered here, are witnessing history being made. The declaration that from this evening, Colchester is a city with letters patent issued in the name of Queen Elizabeth the Second but served in the reign of King Charles the Third, is a momentous occasion. In the two thousand years history of what today we know as Colchester, but which at the time of the Roman invasion in A.D. forty-three was Camulodunum, the principal settlement of the ancient British tribe, the Trinavantes, with the tribal capital probably at Gosbecks. The Emperor Claudius had a triumphal arch built where Balkan Gate was built later. He declared this to be his city of victory, a colonia, the highest form of a Roman city. And for several years from A.D. forty-nine, it was the de facto capital of Roman Britain. Britain's first city, Britain's first capital. The second moment of historical significance of the magnitude to what we are celebrating tonight came in nine seventeen, when, as stated in the Anglo-Saxon Chronicle, the Saxon king Eber the Elder granted the status of borough precursor to a borough. It indicated that we were a fortified town, which he had re-fortified and restored after driving out the Danish Vikings. The third was during the thirty-five-year reign of the Norman king, Henry the Second, when, on an unknown date between eleven fifty-four and eleven eighty-nine, he made Colchester a borough, giving Colchester the right of self-government, the right of self-government. Becoming a city in twenty twenty-two, restoring the city's status granted one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three years ago, is a date in Colchester's rich history to match the three previous ones I have mentioned. The big difference, of course, is that we are living participants in this history-making day, taking place in our magnificent moot hall with the portrait of our late Queen looking down on us. Mr Mayor, this building is not a museum, nor should it be. For Colchesterans, it symbolises civic pride. Our town hall, and it retains that historic name, represents the seat of Colchester's local democracy, even though sadly successive national governments have diluted Colchester's self-government from what it once was. Less than three hours ago, the sun set for the last time on Colchester as a town, as a borough. In little more than twelve hours, the sun will rise on Colchester's first day as a city in modern times. It is an honour and a privilege, as the twenty-third person to hold the position of High Steward of Colchester, that I welcome city status for what now makes Colchester Britain's oldest recorded city. Thank you.
I now call on the leader of the Labour Group and deputy leader of the council, councillor Adam Fox.
Lord Lieutenant, Mr City Mayor, fellow city councillors, honorary aldermen and guests. It is a great honour to speak this evening. Nearly twenty years ago, I made Colchester my home, first at the University of Essex and then further welcomed into the town by so many other people. Colchester was a welcoming place then and it remains so now. And it's great to see so many people here who've made Colchester their home too. When we bid for city status, and I'd like to thank all of those involved, particularly councillor Laws, our members of parliament, so many who worked in the Borough Council and the University of Essex, the garrison and so many others. When we put in that bid and we made our recommendation in this place, I listed just some of the things that make Colchester a unique place and for so many of us, we will have those special things. Those special things that we love about this city. But tonight I wanted to say something about what lies ahead. As has been alluded to, the next few years may well be tough for all of us. But city status gives us the opportunity to forge something special for Colchester. Not just for the city, but for those who identify their town or village as the place that they live in. In every community and for every community. And ultimately, it's the people that make a place. And I hope that together, we will make the new city of Colchester a place that shines bright. A future city of sustainability, a future city of prosperity and a future city that gives everyone opportunity. It is up to us in this room and beyond it, the current citizens and the future ones too, to make the city of Colchester an even greater place than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. I now call on the leader of the Conservative Group, councillor Darius Laws, please.
Lord Lieutenant, Mr Mayor, friends, this is just epic. I mean, that wax seal is just phenomenal. This is an incredibly proud moment for us all. There are too many people to thank for the technical reason of why we are here today. Over many years and I can see many faces in this room who have all played a part in getting us to where we are. getting us to where we are. I will just give a nod to the former leader of the council, Paul Dundas, because if it wasn't for him indulging me when I put my hand up saying that we must bid for city status, we wouldn't be here today. So I'm very grateful to Paul. I know there was trepidation about doing this because we'd tried four times previously and been unsuccessful. But there was something in my stomach that said we really did have a chance. And when we weren't up against Ipswich and the South End, I knew that we really did have a very strong chance. When you're in the chamber downstairs, and if you haven't seen it lately, please go and have a look, it's always open for you. You can look on the wall and see 2,000 years' worth of name variants of Colchester. It really does just demonstrate what a special place this is. The one name that has always stood out to me, though, is colonia victorcances, the city of the victorious, as was named by the Romans. Now, tonight isn't the night to have a discussion about whether they were invited here or not. But what is absolutely certain is that they came here. In fact, metres away from where we are right now, they had a fortress that then became the colonia. They came here first of everywhere on this island. And no doubt, they came here for our sophisticated culture, our people and also our assets. So we've still got assets, attributes and sophistication today in abundance. It's been said earlier, but you know, the people, the spirit, there is something here, isn't there? We are a lovely, tolerant, open-minded, enthusiastic, fun, entrepreneurial people. And I meet strangers on a virtually a daily basis, and I really feel something special here, and that's why I stay here and have made this my home. When I'm underground fertilising the grass and trees in the graveyard in Naland, maybe it'll be my children and maybe your children that will be involved in the next chapter. And maybe actually, the next chapter might be about UNESCO World Heritage status. Because actually, if we make small incremental gains every year, whether that's refurbishing a historic building, lighting up a historic asset, unveiling a new Roman mosaic, if we do those little things, eventually, we're going to have an even more special place to call our home. I'm acutely aware, though, that as a local authority, the number one priority for everyone is, will your bins be collected on time? We know that this matter is sacrosanct. However, there does come occasions when, as an elected part-time politician, you do have to step up and you do have to lead and you do have to make a difficult decision. And I'm so proud that, as a collective, we made the decision to stick in a bid, and it's an honour that our late queen gave us this opportunity. We've now got to seize it. Britain's first Roman city is now Britain's newest city, something I'm proud to have personally played a very small part in. And on behalf of the Conservative Group in here, the largest single-party group, I support the motion. I pay tribute to the mayor for his leadership in this. I pay tribute to the previous mayor, councillor Robert Davidson, who was thrust in in front of the cameras and the media to welcome in the news. And I'm very grateful that you're all here this evening. I hope you have a lovely time. Thank you very much.
I've had no other indications from any other councillor. Oh, councillor Cox. There's a few others indicating. We are on a schedule, I'll just remind you that. Councillor Cox.
Lord Lieutenant, Mr Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to pay tribute to my predecessor councillor Laws in his role as cabinet officer for heritage and culture for really pushing this bid. It now partly falls to me to make sure that we have a year of celebration that's worthy of the name of the city of Colchester, and we're absolutely determined to do that. If you have thoughts and ideas that you would like to see represented in that year of celebration, please drop me a line. Many people have said much of what I'm going to say, I'm just going to say briefly, that Colchester became a city for the first time in its history, but at a key point in its history, as many have said. It's one of the country's fastest-growing places. It's a place of energy, of warmth, of an appetite for change. So for a city with an unparalleled history and a very exciting future, I commend the city of Colchester to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pam Cox. Councillor Sam McLean, please.
Well, isn't this great? Colchester, Britain's oldest town, now Britain's youngest city. But our newly conferred city status brings with it a challenge for us all. We must be the city we're expected to be by residents and people who visit. To be a city, we need to consider and provide for infrastructure. We need modern healthcare, modern educational facilities, social facilities that match our growth, green public transport that's frequent, affordable and on-routes that make sense. We need well-maintained roads and public spaces, as well as practical, well-fought-out cycles. We need regeneration and more civic pride. We could be a vibrant, attractive city centre with a broad range of offerings and clean, well-maintained shop frontages, green spaces, even paving with no more weeds growing through the cracks. We need stewardship. We need to provide for the future maintenance and renewal of this young city as the protection of our heritage, as a Roman town and a historic military centre. And we need to create a legacy. What will we leave for future generations that records Colchester in the 2020s and shows something that we, our children and future generations can be proud of? We must be ambitious, and I think we can be ambitious, and I think we can achieve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And I know there's some of you out there thinking, aren't councillors getting younger? And I say, yes, they are, and good thing too. Councillor Nayler.
Lord Lieutenant, Mr Mayor, thank you. I am the footnote, I may not be the last speaker, but I was the last Borough councillor to be elected, and I was the first councillor to be elected after city status was conferred. And that for me is a special honour, and I just want to say that we all treasure this moment, and I for one will do my part to make sure that we are more than a footnote in history. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Well put. I'm now going to ask the leader of the council, councillor Davy King, to sum up.
I can feel the appetite for a long speech, Mr Mayor. So I'll just say simply this, that all of the speakers have captured the spirit of the moment, have spoken with eloquence and understanding, and having put all of their complimentary parts together, we are reminded of the strength and breadth of this council and its endeavour, singular and collective, to represent well the people of this city. I thank them, I thank you and the Lord Lieutenant, and I close.
Okay, and I'm going to move to the vote. The vote is on the motion that the name of Colchester Borough Council be changed to Colchester City Council with immediate effect, and that the monitoring officer to my left be authorised to make the necessary consequential amendments to the council's constitution. Can I see all those in favour, please?
That's unanimous, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. That is carried. That concludes the first meeting. Can I ask you all to stand for the National Anthem, please? Thank you. Can you all remain standing for the moment? And can I ask you to remain in the moot hall? While those of us on the stage leave, there will be a five-minute break prior to the commencement of the next special meeting to confer honorary alderman status on Peter Chillingworth. During the break, you won't be bored because a short film celebrating Colchester's city status will be shown. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillors! Ladies and gentlemen, the first are Mayor of the City of Colchester, Mr. Tim Young.[786.88][786.88](Applause) Back so soon? Um, please be seated. Hello again, and welcome to the first full council meeting of Colchester City Council. I'm councillor Tim Young, Mayor of the City of Colchester, and I'll be chairing this meeting. Again, the meeting is being broadcast live over the internet on the council's YouTube channel and will also be available to watch afterwards. Should the alarm sound, please evacuate using the nearest emergency exit and assemble at the car park at the rear of the town hall. We have received apologies from councillors Barber, Barton, Buston, Goss, Kirkley, Taylor, Lilly, Listonmore, Luxfordborne, Nissen and Tate. Are there any declarations of interest? Again, I'll be very surprised if there are. Okay, thank you. Then I move on to item three. And again, I invite councillor David King, leader of the city council, to move motion A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many will want to speak on this subject, so I will be brief in speaking, I hope, for the spirit of the full chamber, as well as for the Liberal Democrat group. General item 3A, motion A, I move that in pursuant to the provisions of section 249 of the Local Government Act 1972. I feel you're all riveted by this. This council confers the title of honorary alderman on former councillor Chillingworth in recognition of his loyal and eminent service as a member of the council and its constituent authority. I'll briefly just say this: Peter Chillingworth is a person I admire. He strikes the note that you want to strike, in my view, as a councillor, one that you know will travel in a good way. When so many messages, let's be honest, may not have the same resonance Peter's struck, in my experience, the right ones. This is a person of deep knowledge, actually, interestingly passionate about some of the causes and issues about which he cares. But that experience, that knowledge, that depth is brought to bear, in my experience, in a very rich way. And he's combined it with a fairness of character and a sense of measure of the breadth of the chamber, the issues of the day, rather than just the narrow political piece that shows him to be, in my view and recommendation, a man of real character and stature. And so it's an easy duty and an honour to open our proceedings with a full-hearted recommendation of Peter, as he approaches this honour. Thank you.[999.36][999.36](Applause)
I've got two speakers already. Can I see indications of those who wish to speak in this debate? Honorary aldermen are also entitled to speak in this debate. Okay, you have up to three minutes. And the first one I'm going to call is councillor Nigel Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I normally stand here at these sorts of occasions, I'm sort of thanking somebody, congratulating somebody. So I think the title would start by congratulating the City of Colchester. I'll say that for the first time in my long career on this council. So it's great to be here on that, following that occasion. Tremendous. Really, I'm here just to talk about, obviously, Peter Chillingworth. I'm delighted to support his appointment as honorary alderman. Peter and I worked closely over his last few years as a councillor when we shared with honorary alderman Christopher Arnold, rural North Ward. As I say, it's a case of deja vu. And I can remember, I think I proposed him as deputy mayor, as mayor, and I proposed a vote of thanks at the end of his term of office. So I could have a whole ream of things to say about Peter. But I will be slightly more brief on this occasion. I think his great claim to fame is, of course, when in 1999 he lost the election in Great Tay Ward, when he literally drew the short straw. The voters, votes were tied, and the returning officer drew straws to decide who would win. And sadly, Peter lost. But three years later, he was successful. He never had that trouble again. And I think, as councillor King said, he did bring a tremendous amount to the council in those ensuing, I think it was nineteen or twenty years, Peter. I couldn't quite work out how many it was. You had many highlights, I would suggest. It's your time as a councillor. You had responsibilities as a portfolio holder for waste and recycling. You had a famous chairmanship of a task and finish group on flooding. Not sure whether that achieved very much, but looking at the roads that I drove in today. But you did a splendid job on that, I know. And for twelve years, you were on the planning committee and chaired that for two years as well. And really, following your interests, you did, in the last few years, serve on the Environment Task and Committee, or whatever it's called, panel. And I think you brought all your skills and expertise of the rural areas, of country life, and your many years of living in the wonderful village of Wakecombe. So I think, over those periods on the council, you've really shown what it is to be an honorary alderman. So I'm delighted that you are joining that remarkable band of former borough councillors, some of whom are here, present today. I've worked with, I think, all of them. And as I say, I think you are well deserved of joining them. Thank you, Peter.[1178.40][1178.40](Applause)
Next speaker is the deputy mayor, councillor John Giles.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to all of you here. Get these microphones organised. Now I've got Peter within clutching reach, he can't run away, can he? And I vividly remember, twenty-three years ago, Peter, and don't even approach, six weeks before the election, when it came to that classic, I think it was in here or in the grand jury room, when there were tickets in a hat. And then, poor Peter. I've never seen anyone take defeat so graciously, until he told me afterwards that he hadn't got a clue what he was supposed to be doing. And he didn't know whether it had been plucked, boiled or roasted, basically. But then again, three years later, he became a councillor. And what has always stuck in my mind is that he had a moral core. Didn't matter about the ideology. In fact, he must have infuriated any whips we might have had on our side. I don't think we ever did do anything so gross as that. And you could see that his personal morality overrode a shallow ideology. And that's quite rare, actually. So I think he will make an absolutely magnificent alderman. I could say other things. And also, Nigel didn't mention your career in ADAS, which was Agricultural Advisory Service. So he's a man of many parts, a man of many talents, dry sense of humour, and much more to Peter than you would ever imagine. So it's been a great pleasure and an honour to work with him. And he thoroughly deserves the aldermanship. I would recommend it to you all.[1305.11][1305.11](Applause)
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Adam Fox, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not speak for very long, but I know many people here will often have got sick of hearing national or local politicians talking very much and listening a little less than they ought to. But I know from my time on the council, whether it was in committees or in full council, that whenever Peter spoke, people did listen. And that you had an authority in the chamber that, you know, I think people across the chamber really respected. You respected your contributions. And I think Colchester was a better place because of those contributions that you made. So on behalf of the Labour Group, I'm very happy to support your appointment as honorary alderman.[1368.88][1368.88](Applause)
I now call honorary alderman Christopher Arnold, with a reminder that you have three minutes.[1384.64][1384.64](Laughter)
What a memory, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I congratulate you on becoming the first mayor of the City of Colchester. And you've made much of that record. If memory serves, what has happened tonight already means that Peter Chillingworth holds a record which will never be broken. Because I think that he was the oldest councillor ever to be elected as mayor of this borough. And I say borough, because that's what it was. And now that it's no longer a borough, that record can't be broken. From 1995, I had Great Little Hawkesley to myself as a member of this council. 2002, I was joined by councillor Chapman on slightly larger boundaries. And then, 2016, Peter Chillingworth joined the three of us. And it was great to be part of that team, not least because Peter was professionally trained in two of the areas that really mattered to rural councillors. ADAS has already been mentioned. But he was trained in planning, particularly in reference to rural areas. And I knew that he'd been involved with the campaign for the protection of rural Essex. And it meant that you'd got on the team as somebody who was absolutely steeped in the knowledge that you needed to do a really good job in that area. It was... He had also a great knowledge of the detail of what made villages tick. And he came up with initiatives that he thought would be appropriate to sort of put in place across the board based on his experience as a parish councillor. And he was a complete joy to work with. And I certainly look forward, if alderman, work at anything, I certainly look forward to working with him again as he joins the band of honorary aldermen, several of us who are here tonight. So I commend this motion to council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[1520.88][1520.88](Applause)
Thank you, honorary alderman Arnold. As you pointed out, that Peter was the oldest ever mayor of the borough of Colchester. The monitoring officer whispered in my ear, "That makes you, Mr. Mayor, the youngest ever mayor of the City of Colchester."[1539.84][1539.84](Laughter) And the oldest. Next on my list, I have honorary alderman Theresa Higgins.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And congratulations on the city status to everybody. I'm pleased here to actually welcome Peter Chillingworth to our merry little band. We will now be twenty-three. So, welcome to the band. I hope you'll have a good time with us. We are a great bunch of people. And I hope you'll come to the alderman's meetings, of which there are two a year. And apparently, we do have, quote, "an advisory capacity." They don't have to listen to us, but we can advise the council. So, welcome to the band, and thank you very much.[1589.84][1589.84](Applause)
I have no other indications, so I'll ask councillor King to sum up, please.
Mr. Mayor, that was splendidly done. We kept the time, we kept our eye on our audience, who's starting to shift around a bit. And we kept on the subject. We reaffirmed between us the deep respect across the chamber for Peter, in the way that I started and others have concluded. So this is a great moment for this great City of Colchester. And it's fantastic that we have Peter Chillingworth as our first alderman of the new era. And that's it.[1635.84][1635.84](Applause)
We will move to the vote. The motion is that this council, because of the section of that act that David mentioned, confirms the title of honorary alderman on former councillor Peter Chillingworth in recognition of his loyal and eminent service as a member of the council and its constituent authority. And he will become the first honorary alderman of the City of Colchester. All those in favour, please show.
Ash unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
That is carried. Congratulations, Peter.[1673.04][1673.04](Applause) And so it's my great pleasure to present this certificate conferring that honorary alderman title to former councillor Peter Chillingworth.[1706.00][1706.00](Applause) Okay, I think we should hear from him, don't you?
Yeah!
Honorary alderman Peter Chillingworth.
Lord Lieutenant, distinguished guests, Mr. Mayor, honorary aldermen, councillors, guests, my guests, and everybody else, thank you for all you've said tonight. I feel honoured to become the first honorary alderman of this great City of Colchester. I'm humbled by the comments I've heard from my ex-colleagues. I stand here after twenty years as an ordinary councillor. I say ordinary, but... I stand here after twenty years as an ordinary councillor, I say ordinary, but... And it's been quite a time. I've made a list of the things I've been proud of, but I'm not going to go through them because it's going to take far too long. No, I've been honoured to be able to help people, people hopefully in my ward and on a bigger stage within the council, on the committees, the planning committee for instance. I have a professional interest in planning, so to be able to be on that committee and chairman was a great privilege. And I understand far better now what people go through when they apply for planning permission, having just done it myself recently. Yes, I was going to go through some of the highlights of my twenty years, but John and others already mentioned many of them. It was quite a night, I think it was in the mood for, when I stood after six weeks. The late Roger Browning, who was a former mayor of the borough, invited me to become a councillor. I'd been a civil servant for thirty years as a professional, and I thought, yeah, let's give it a go, let's go on the other side, see what an elected member does. Yes, that first baptism, shall we say, on the platform here, and then, of course, it's been thirty years, I think, since there's been a dead heat in the council, the press got involved. So next morning, I had Judith Moritz, who used to work in the eastern region, in my back sitting room, interviewing me, and I thought, is local government always this exciting? I think there are a few things people I want to thank. First of all, John, you invited me on your cabinet when we had a minority administration in, I think, oh four. And he gave me a portfolio, yes, waste and recycling, just when the whole system collapsed. We were very ambitious in trying to recycle a lot more material, and unfortunately it meant new routes for the freighters, and it didn't work. So there he was, a new portfolio holder, trying to grapple with this problem. And by first full council, I think I had to answer seventeen questions from you lot. You make life very difficult for a portfolio holder. No, we got through it, and I think now we have a very good recycling borough. I think I also want to thank the outgoing mayor, because he was the one who appointed me as chairman of planning, and thank you very much for that. I also wanted to thank Pam and all the officers who support us, supported me particularly. The town sergeant, when I was mayor, it was a marvellous year, but the town sergeant, where is he? Oh, sorry, supported me superbly, and my wife as mayor's. And I think the officers do a grand job in this borough, sorry, city, city. And we wouldn't get anywhere without them, thank you, Pam. I also want to thank my wife Anne. The support in the home on Mother's Council is so important, and we do upset the routine very often, don't we? We want meals at ungodly hours, when she might be busy doing something else and getting involved, perhaps forcibly, in civic events, when perhaps you'd rather be sitting at home watching television. Yes, I shall be able to do that soon. Yes, and thank you for the support from you, Anne. And thank you, councillors, for the support you've provided to me and the friendship, the comradeship over the years. It's been a privilege, and for twenty years I was proud to say, I am a councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, honorary Alderman Chillingworth. That concludes the business of the meeting. Can I ask all those that are able to to please stand? Those of us on the stage again will leave the moot hall. Could councillors please leave their robes on their seats? Scousers, eh? Yeah, if you could leave your robes on your seats, that'd be really helpful. And those present attending the reception after we've left should make their way down to the civic suite. Thank you very much indeed.